Yeah, went on vacation for three years. People were on vacation. I still, I mean, I told them.
Oh, yeah.
Very picked a couple for me, I think. I don't know if we did or we didn't. But it was a very good stuff. Fixed the seat on one. Detailed one. I think that's the one I bought. How do you do that?
They melt it all down there.
That's his job, not mine. If I got the heat gun out by that plastic bumper, the rest of them would be melting on their own.
You'd have a pumpkin-sized hole in it.
Since at six o'clock, I'll call the Charter Township of Comstock Neat Planning Commission to order. If everybody would join me in the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first, the agenda. Kyle or Casey, are there any changes or adjustments? Okay.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the approval of the minutes from August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Are there any changes or adjustments to it? I would entertain a motion then.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from August fourteenth, planning commission meeting.
Support.
Go ahead.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next we're going to citizen comments. A citizen may make, may state their name, address, and may speak only one time for no more than three minutes. This time may not be given to another citizen to extend their time. The person speaking has the floor and no other citizen shall speak during someone else's time. During this time, you will be making statements to the board without discussion from the board members, but you are welcome to make appointments with planning and zoning staff to discuss your comments further. Please keep comments clean and respectful.
Mr. Chair, if I might, before we begin with it, we do have three public hearings tonight. So if anyone is in the audience wishing to speak on those, there will be time later for specific items.
Yes.
Hey, little gang. I'm a longtime Comstock resident.
State your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, Brian, I can state your name. I've been here sixty years roughly, or well, a little less than that. Anyways, I know all you guys and almost everybody lives, perhaps, whatever. Standing back as a person that, like from my class of nineteen eighty-four, I'm trying to not necessarily represent class ours, whatever. I've seen a lot. I try not to be a jokester. I do when I'm frustrated, just so I don't, you know, say the wrong things, laugh about it, but it's intentional to make it laughable, but there's usually a key word in there that points out what I'm directing it towards. So I guess I'm gonna slide into something. See, I'm kind of being hassled right now by a certain body, not necessarily affiliated with that. It's about a prime resident exemption. It's came back failed and I'm going into backlaw that's pretty massive. I don't believe through my attorney's things that I haven't done anything wrong. Some of the issues that are brought about relation with the states and our local representatives or whatever, it just doesn't chime in right. We're so vague on so many things. They're telling me I don't stay at someplace. I've been there all day except for the last two hours. So you're not gonna be able to fix the problem, but maybe this will go on record. But, you know, there are certain reasons why sometimes people, if they're as fortunate as I, don't choose to reside the evening in the house which they own outright because there is nothing but an active meth lab. Did you hear that crack? It's really frustrating that we can't resolve it, whether it's the ordinance officer or what have you. I can't sleep, okay? When there's people pulling in on my driveway, there's a puddle, which I have spoke with at the, the, when Larry was the chair for the, what'd you call it? The, or, my property tax are high and guess what? I have lake property. No, I don't. I have a frickin' eighteen-inch pond in front of my house. It's regular. Okay, so I have state institutionalized people doing the junk in the middle of the road at one place. The other place are out there like Walmart, going in the backyards. So I did call the fire department today, took over. I didn't check. I think it was twenty-some minutes for North Station. Their phone number doesn't react on the old phone book that I have. I result to that shit. Anyways, so when they finally showed up, they couldn't issue a citation. They were burning rubber. Whatever they were doing. It wasn't garbage. It was terrible. Two thirty in the afternoon, it would make me dizzy. So we have an issue with all that and above, sorry, but, you know, you can't
Thank you, Brian.
allow people to point that this and that's proper when the other things around it are not proper. I'm sorry. He's out. There's tomatoes in the car if anybody wants some.
Any other comments? If not, I guess I will close public comment for now. And, or citizen comment, and go to new business. Fifty-three oh one East Main. Kyle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Planning Department has received an application for fifty-three oh one East Main in order to erect a accessory structure. As the commission is probably aware, anything over a certain size requires special land use approval through the planning commission. Based on our findings throughout this, you know, the first request comes through as accessory buildings that are not strictly attached to the residence shall not be located so forth closer than five feet. You know, they need to be the height of the structure away in that regard. So we go through these standards as outlined in section five point one point D of special land use, and they may be allowed if they meet the criteria as indicated. So in our review, we found that, you know, one, proposed accessory building shall not have a material adverse impact upon the owners and occupants of surrounding properties based on the location of where they're proposing the structure. We did not find it to have an adverse or material impact on adjacent neighbors. However, we do welcome, you know, one, during the public hearing, two, come forward and speak on that. Two, there's some application requirements which have been satisfied by supplemental documents from the applicant. Three, the application for a special use permit shall include a statement setting forth a proposed use. We understand the proposed use to be a greenhouse in order for them to grow food and other items onsite for onsite consumption. Under supplemental considerations, anything from one acre to two point nine nine acres is permitted a total floor area of two thousand square feet. Based on our findings from the assessing records, there's an attached garage at four hundred and seventy, an existing pole barn or accessory structure at one thousand twenty square feet. The proposed garage or greenhouse, in this case, is thirty by forty, so it'd be a one thousand two hundred square feet. So total, they are looking at over, you know, two thousand six hundred and ninety, so six hundred and ninety square feet above what is permitted administratively. So because of that, they are, you know, in need of a special land use from this body. You know, our review findings in this case are the proposed structure is shown to be located in the rear yard. You know, we would ask for some dimensions just to ensure that we have that on file within the township. Zoning ordinance requires structures greater than two hundred feet to be located away from the property boundary, a distance equal to the height of the structure. Structure is proposed to be thirteen feet away, so they need a thirteen-foot setback based on their generalized location. They can probably meet that, but we would like confirmation in that regard. Three, proposed greenhouse would exceed the maximum permitted by, you know, approximately six hundred and ninety square feet. And then the R one A district does permit incidental raising and retail sale of horticultural and agricultural products grown on premise. Because the applicant has indicated they propose a greenhouse, we didn't want to put that in there in case there was any concern of them growing produce there and then selling it. They are permitted under our zoning ordinance to do that. So with that, that's the short end of our report, and I'll entertain any questions.
Is somebody representing the property here? Would you like to come speak to the issue?
Thank you for your time. I've not done this before, so this is a new adventure for me. But, yeah, we're just looking to build a greenhouse on pretty much exactly where it is on that map there, maybe within a couple of feet, but it's several feet away from the road and from any of the property lines. We're just looking to grow food for our family and maybe some trees and things like that of that nature.
Does anybody have questions for the applicant?
I do. Is this a commercial style greenhouse that you're gonna construct yourself?
It is one that you construct yourself. Yeah, it's a kit that you can get off online. It's, it's kind of like a hoop house, if you know what that is. It's not a, I wouldn't say it's a commercial grade, but it, I mean, it's not
It's a manufactured.
Yeah, yeah, but it's not a super cheap one either. It's, I mean, it's four or five thousand dollars to invest in it.
Steel and double poly?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Guess I
This does require a public hearing.
Yes, maybe we should do the public hearing now. We do need a motion for that.
I move we open the public hearing for fifty-three oh one East Main, special use.
Sorry, Joe, support.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we are now in public hearing for this item on our agenda. Anyone want to speak to it? Now's your time. Okay, I guess we're gonna close public hearing. Do you have a motion?
I move we close the public hearing.
For? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We are now out of public hearing and we can go into discussion here. Guess I'll start with you, bub.
I'm all for it. I know the property. I've driven by it a thousand times over my lifetime. Greenhouse sits way back offside. He keeps everything down there nice and neat. This is exactly why we're looking at that other ordinance. Because if we weren't working on the other ordinance, he would be perfectly okay to do this with what we're looking at doing. So I have no, no problem with this whatsoever.
Thank you, bub. Greg?
I think with what we're doing with the ordinances, this would fit right in, so I have no objection.
Joe?
Given the lot size and the location, I think this request is reasonable and appropriate, so I have no problem with it.
James?
I agree that this should go with no problem on the lot size and when we're working with the ordinance. I know on repeat record, but I know what's behind it. I drive by this a lot every day for my work. I'm in favor.
Sandy?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but even though we are working on changing our ordinance, doesn't this make him over the limit after we work through the rest of our ordinance where we're headed? I guess that might be for Kyle.
Well, that would be dependent on how the planning commission decides to do any kind of credits and square footage like that if you want to modify it, so.
Correct, but I kind of feel like we might be setting precedence for this based on the fact that he has two point nine acres and he's permitted two thousand square feet. And with his attached garage, if you take away his attached garage, which we're planning on doing in our ordinance, since we are working on the ordinance for accessory buildings, and he already has a pole barn of a thousand twenty square feet and the garage is twelve hundred square feet, I guess, does that put him over the limit of even what we are proposing to change in our ordinance?
So he's over the limit, which requires the special use?
Correct.
Right, so you, then you apply your standards, as Kyle mentioned in your staff report, to determine if you think it would be injurious to the neighborhood or other things. So, yeah, yes, he is over the number, and when you change that ordinance, you may change those numbers or not. I don't know.
Using the numbers, we would, he'd be over like
Like two hundred feet, I think.
I think ninety feet, isn't it? Two hundred?
And I understand he's before us with a special use, but I was just pointing that out for the planning commission based on where we're heading with our ordinance of reworking our accessory buildings. It's kind of why I was just bringing attention to it.
Yeah, and you're absolutely correct.
So.
But, um
I would only comment that with a special use exception, I don't think you're actually setting a precedent. It's kind of like a variance. It's a case-by-case basis.
Correct.
Thank you all. Tonight, we can't vote on this unless we bypass our bylaws.
I would like to move that we bypass our bylaws considering our crowded agenda and the lack of public comment during the public hearing. I think that it would be appropriate to proceed directly to a resolution.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Support.
Okay, let's do a roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. Again, asleep. All right. Yes, if you vote yes, you're saying yes, we want to waive the bylaws and proceed tonight with the decision. And if you vote no, you want to uphold the bylaws and push this to the next available meeting.
All right, Commissioner Sherwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Nowak?
Yes.
Commissioner Weintraub?
Yes.
Chair Nichols?
Yes.
Commissioner Kreitzer?
Yes.
Treasurer Bloomfield?
Yes.
Motion passes. Six yays, zero ahs.
Well, at this point, I would entertain a motion for this property. For the special exception on this property.
I'll make a motion that we accept the special use for the address fifty-three oh one East Main.
Support.
We need another roll call, please.
All right. Do I need to say anything? If we vote yes, then we're approving the special use. If we vote no, it's not approving.
Thank you, Catherine.
Commissioner Sherwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Nowak?
Yes.
Commissioner Weintraub?
Yes.
Chair Nichols?
Yes.
Commissioner Kreitzer?
Yes.
Treasurer Bloomfield?
Yes.
Motion passes, six yays.
Okay, moving on to the next item on our agenda. The rezoning of one fifty-five Elliott. Kyle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I could back up for a minute, staff will work with the applicant on our last one and get them an approval letter in the coming week. And so they are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but they are not required to anymore at their time. So before you now is one five five Elliott. The back history of this is that it is split zoned. It has been parents of split zoning since the nineteen seventies in that regard. The applicant is requesting to rezone the southern portion, which is including this larger commercial industrial building from the R one B district to LM. So LM is on the northern portion, R one B on the southern. As like a lot of our rezonings, we have to go through the criteria. It is shown, you know, on our map here, indicated by the star, so it is, you know, industrial to the north, residential to the south. It is surrounded by residential to the east, south, and west, industrial to the north. Future land use classification calls for this site to be general industrial. Overall, general industrial for the north as well, and then compact residential surrounding the other three compasses. Now, we do have some considerations or concerns based on our twenty thirty vision master plan or future land use. This is not to the applicant's detriment, but it is just our understanding because of how the future land use map is drawn using polygons and not property boundaries, we had a challenge to make a definitive determination of if this is future land used for compact residential or industrial. Past applications you've seen recently have been smack dab in the middle of an ag district, or so it's been a lot easier for us to interpret. This, given the proximity and the way the map is drawn, led us to, you know, unable to make a definitive determination of how the future land use map classifies this property. So with that, that was our, you know, first review of, you know, is it consistent with the policies and, you know, procedures of the master plan? You know, I can't definitively determine yes or no based on how the map is drawn in that regard. So I will, you know, require the planning commission to weigh in on that as well. Whether all uses allowed under the proposed rezoning would be compatible with other zones and uses in the surrounding area. You know, here I've listed out the permitted uses for the R one B and then LM district. You know, they are obviously drastically different, residential versus industrial. However, the applicant has indicated that we know that the northern half of that site has been used for industrial purposes, the southern half as well to an extent, even though it is zoned R one B. Now, whether this, any public services and facilities would be adversely impacted, you know, I can't speak to that. That would be up to the applicant on if they did any kind of site expansion or new building permits to go that route. Whether the use is allowed under the proposed rezoning would be equally or better suited. You know, again, by nature, the industrial district is different than the residential. So our findings, you know, again, the big one being that the future land use map does not clearly for us indicate if this is supposed to be industrial or residential, so we will need to make a determination in that regard. The predominant land use within the subject site vicinity is residential, again, to the east, south, and west. The application material notes that sanitary sewer line was reviewed some years ago. Since that time, no further documentation appears to have been produced that would indicate, you know, the proposed rezoning would not adversely impact, so there is a sewer line down through that area. And then four historical zoning maps indicate this area of the township has been residential since the nineteen seventies. You know, as such, the use allowed in the LM district may not be suitable for that. Casey was able to pull up some past historical zoning maps that are in your packet as well to lend credits to show that this has been an area that's had that, I don't want to say confliction, but between residential and industrial. It's by understanding as well that the applicant has provided additional documentation the past week based on site plans. There were some meeting minutes that were presented as well that talked more about a tax abatement through an industrial tax. I T F? I F T. So with that, I will entertain questions from the commission.
Anybody have questions for Kyle? If not, then I guess I would ask the recipient, or the owner of the property. Is there someone representing this? You want to speak to this?
Hello, my name is Jeremy Brooks. I'm representing Brooks Property Holdings in one five five Elliott. I know there's a bunch of documents, so I wasn't sure if everybody did get the email with the three other meeting notes. Okay, so if we do it chronologically, hopefully it does set a precedence that the building was intended for industrial use all along. It's just somewhere along the line. In my opinion, the i's didn't get crossed, or t's crossed and i's dotted. If you start with the notes from November twentieth, nineteen ninety-seven, that's when they asked for the initial site plan review. February second, nineteen ninety-eight, there was a public hearing for an industrial facilities exemption, which he had mentioned. And then February seventeenth, nineteen ninety-eight, at the regular public hearing, that industrial facilities exemption certificate was approved unanimously. So that included, for that to get approved, that included the new building, adding parking lot, and creating five new industrial jobs. Then on October eighth, there was another site plan review, and that's where they realized that the hundred-foot setback requirement for light zone manufacturing abutting residential zones wasn't there. So they asked the table to matter till the next meeting. And then October twenty-seventh, nineteen ninety-eight, the zoning board of appeals, there was a variance request proposing a twenty-foot setback as opposed to the hundred-foot setback required for industrial use. The variance was approved with the conditioning of planting screening. There was a twenty-foot property all the way around and they wanted trees planted, which was done. Some of the trees have since passed away, but. And then October, or November fifth, the planning commission meeting, the site plan was reviewed, and then it was approved and granted a unanimous decision. The December thirtieth, nineteen ninety-eight is where there was a special meeting because they wanted to have that sewer brought up Elliott, so there was a special agreement between the township and, at the time, I believe it was Prab, or that they would bring the sewer up, and then if anybody wanted to hook up, then they would get a credit or something like that. November fifth, or, excuse me, July thirtieth. And then, so then the other notes are just some, the B S N A property info. There's a lease in there, and then letters from Prab. Basically, the building was intended to be built for light manufacturing. It's always been used as light manufacturing, whether it's been LaFrous Manufacturing, which was Brian Hicks owned it. They sold it to Prab, and then I purchased it from Prab. And we've been using it. I rent, I subleased it to Kenon for several years, and then the only reason it really came up was somebody came down to the township and I think they wanted to do battery recycling or something, and that's when it was discovered that that portion of the property wasn't zoned, or had a split zone. The split zone, that building is a ninety-six-hundred-square-foot building with a truck bay door or dock and a twenty-two-foot overhead door. It's, actually, it's the pre-engineered, like a Wharton Building or Butler Building. I think there was some discrepancy in the notes that called it a pole barn. It's definitely not a pole barn.
Any question? Any questions for him? For the applicant?
Then I could also touch on, in the, on page twenty-seven, there was a note made that if the subject site was to be rezoned from R one B to light manufacturing, such a rezoning would then create a non-conforming structure due to the setback. But as I previously stated in the zoning board of appeals on October twenty-seventh, nineteen ninety-eight, that setback was approved for the variance of twenty foot. Also, the impact of the utilities, so when the building was built, they did hook up to the sewer and paid the one-time lifetime fee. It also has, was hooked up with four hundred amp three-phase power and industrial gas, and it has an industrial well. So it's basically been used as an industrial building ever since. So the impact is, going forward, is it going to be any greater or any less than what it's already been since the building's been built? So, yeah, if you look at the one, originally, the applicant was for seventy-five seventy-four because at that time, there was no one five five Elliott. It was all just one lot. There was no improved lot at the time. So if you look at some of the notes, it'll call out the original address of the main building. And maybe that's where some of the confusion came to.
I think we have a good idea.
Okay, I don't know if anybody stopped out at the building or looked at it or
I think probably everybody has.
Oh, okay, good. Oh, okay, good.
Absolutely.
And we talked to the neighbors too, and I don't know if anybody here, but if they had any questions. We try to be good neighbors. We did, we've done stuff like the lighting and stuff, kept that down. So it's mainly just for the cameras, so they can see the issues we've been having with theft and people sleeping on the property, but that's a different matter.
Okay. Any questions before we move on?
If there is, I can come back up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We need to go into a public hearing now. I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to open a public hearing for 155 Elliott rezoning request.
Support.
Okay, let's do a roll call, please.
Public hearing, yeah.
One second, let me get, I jot a note right quick. One sec. Okay. Commissioner Sherwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Nowak?
Yes.
Commissioner Weintraub?
Yes.
Chair Nichols?
Yes.
Commissioner Kreitzer?
Yes.
Treasurer Bloomfield?
Yes.
Motion passes six yays, zero nays.
Okay, we are open for a public hearing for this, for 155 Elliott. Since we have nobody wanting to speak on this issue, I would entertain a motion.
Make motion to close public hearing on 155 Elliott.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sherwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Nowak?
Yes.
Commissioner Weintraub?
Yes.
Chair Nichols?
Yes.
Commissioner Kreitzer?
Yes.
Treasurer Bloomfield?
Yes.
Motion passes six yays, zero nays.
Okay. I guess I'd let you, go to you, bub.
It's a big building. I did talk to one of the neighbors who lives next door, Cole Burris, he said he had no problem with this. I mean, this has been used for industrial. I was in on the I F T when we did the tax thing a few years back, granted it, but it's always been used industrial. There's no house on it, so it's a non-conforming lot with just a building. So I think it ought to go all industrial. I don't see anything residential about this building at all, especially the 443-phase electric and commercial wells and everything else. So I have no problem moving this forward.
Craig?
I'm good.
Joe?
Absolutely. If you see the site, it's a non-conforming situation now. We're not creating a non-conformity. We're just correcting an error in the zoning map, I believe. So yes, I would be in favor of approving the rezoning.
James?
I'd be approved in favoring the rezoning also.
Sandy?
I would be in favor, but I would also be in favor of waiving our bylaws for him, for this property as well.
Yeah, I read all the pages of the, pages and pages that we had, and I also visited the site, and my feeling is it's a mistake that we made years ago, and I think we should correct it. But that's my opinion.
Been 29 years, we ought to do something with it.
We, at this point, need to vote whether we want to bypass our bylaws. So I would entertain a motion.
I move we bypass our bylaws and proceed to a vote on this.
Support.
Support.
Would you?
Roll call, roll call?
Please.
Yes. Commissioner Sherwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Nowak?
Yes.
Commissioner Weintraub?
Yes.
Chair Nichols?
Yes.
Commissioner Kreitzer? Treasurer Bloomfield?
Yes.
Motion passes six yays, zero nays.
Okay. Do we need discussion at all on this?
I think we discussed it.
Just a reminder to the commission, you're making a recommendation to the township board.
Right. I would entertain a motion then, that we make a recommendation to the township board.
I move that we recommend to the township board the rezoning of...
155 Elliott?
155 Elliott.
155 Elliott from R1B to LM.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Yes. Commissioner Sherwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Nowak?
Yes.
Commissioner Weintraub?
Yes.
Chair Nichols?
Yes.
Commissioner Kreitzer?
Yes.
Treasurer Bloomfield?
Yes.
Motion passes six yays, zero nays.
Okay. Moving on to 5806 Gal Road, Seven Brew Coffee. Kyle?
I just wanted to let the applicant know that the next board meeting is when?
September 15th, I believe.
September 15th?
At 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM. It requires two readings, but that would be the first meeting, and then if they decide to go forward, well, they have to go to a second reading at another meeting. Okay?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. So your next item up for discussion tonight is 5806 Gal Road. It's for a special land use and site plan review in order to establish a coffeehouse drive-through. There is an application from Seven Brew's in order to develop a vacant parcel right now along Gal Road. On this, the current zoning district is B2 community business, and as such, a drive-through of this nature is considered a special land use. Moving through our findings of facts, the zoning and use, it complies with regulations based on the site plan. They meet the intent and the requirements of the setbacks. Landscaping, screening and buffering meets the standards. Trash enclosure meets the standards. Parking and loading also meets the requirements. Exterior lighting complies, and then any additional agency reviews such as our engineer and fire department. So overall, you have special land use requirements. Harmony with the zoning code is number one. We find that the intent of the B2 district is to provide a district wherein the community's overall commercial and business facilities can be centralized to most efficiently and effectively serve the general township and adjacent area. Based on this, that location does that along Gal Road. Harmony with existing character, as a lot of us are familiar with this corridor commercial, the current site is vacant, but to the north is commercial and service-oriented businesses. South is a significant retail operation of Meyer. To the east is the Veveling Oil Change, so very auto-oriented. And to the west is commercial and drive-through facilities. So again, another auto-oriented operations. Essential character, we listed out what's in that area as well. It would meet the intent and the existing character of that based on the drive-through facilities and other auto-oriented or fast casual dining operations. Hazardous and disruptive, we don't find it to be hazardous or disruptive based on the site plan layout, which we'll get into in a little bit. Adequate public services and facilities will be reviewed further on during the site plan review process, but based on their location, they do have water and sewer available through the area. There are additional use standards for a drive-through. All buildings shall be set back a minimum of 60 feet. They meet this as well. They note a 40-foot building setback envelope, which would be consistent with general provisions of the B2 district. Drive-through facilities do have an additional standard which applies. They meet that. Public access to the site shall be located at least 75 feet from any intersection. Based on their plan set, they're looking at an internal drive through the Meyer access, similar to what Chick-fil-A did, and we looked at that a few months ago. Screening shall be established adjacent to any abutting properties that are residentially developed or in the following districts. Luckily, there are none in that regard, so screening, additional requirements are not needed. Mr., I can go into the site plan review if you'd like to get through all of it, or you would like me to stop at the special land use. They tie it together, I mean, so...
Do you want to tie it together with...
We can, but there will still be two different motions that you'll have to do.
We probably should separate them.
Okay.
Okay, is the applicant here?
Hey, everyone. My name is Dennis Pro. I'm a partner with the group that's trying to do the Seven Brew. I don't know, does anyone know Seven Brew? Have you come across the Seven Brew? Okay. It's new, about three years into a major growth. It's over 450 units in 30 United States right now. We have, my company has 28 that we own and operate. I can say, people here are coffee shop. Do we need another coffee shop? It happens, right? We are completely different. It is a drive-through only operation. It is about cultivating kindness. We emphasize to our employees to engage with the customer. The idea is to have an interaction and have a positive experience, and it's happening. I can tell you, these kids, it's run 18 to 25-year-olds. We hire about 35 to 60 of them. They're high energetic and they're engaging. We take their phones away, so when they get into the work, they put their phones into the little cubby holes, and the whole time you see them, they will not be looking down, taking your order, they are engaging the whole time. It's truly special. As someone who has kids and has seen it, they don't ignore you. It does not happen here. So I just want to let you know, it's a totally different culture. So, and if you have any questions?
Hi, where's the nearest location?
For here, I would say we have one in Holland in Muskegon. We also have one in Lansing, and then we have two up in Traverse City. And I am leaving here and going to Mount Pleasant. We're on a construction in Mount Pleasant right now, and I probably have about nine more deals, Portage, Grand Rapids, and all that area, so looking to grow.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to open public hearing.
Make a motion to open public hearing on Seven Brew Coffee on Gal Road?
Support.
Okay, I guess we'll do a roll call too.
Okay. Commissioner Sherwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Nowak?
Yes.
Commissioner Weintraub?
Yes.
Commissioner, Chair Nichols?
Yes.
Commissioner Kreitzer?
Yes.
Treasurer Bloomfield?
Yes.
Motion passes six yays, zero nays.
Okay, we're open for a public hearing at this point. Since we have nobody speaking, I guess I'll close public hearing if I get a motion.
I make a motion to close public hearing.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I guess at this point, any questions or any comments? Bub?
I'm not familiar with them, but I've looked at that empty piece of property sitting there for years and years and years and years, and I think it'd be a good place to put it. My son says they have a lot of these down south, and Amber told me she absolutely loves them, so she's had them somewhere or so, and I never argue with Amber when she's sitting here. So, no, I haven't heard anything but good reports on it.
Good. Craig?
I'm interested to see something new come into that spot.
Joe?
No problem.
James?
I'm very interested to see what goes in that spot and to fill that area.
Sandy?
I'm all good.
I am too. I think it'd be nice having something else there.
Yep.
At this point, we have to determine if we're going to waive the bylaws or... to move forward or...
Right.
Yeah, I would move that we waive the bylaws in this case, considering our caseload in the future.
Support. If that was a motion.
I think it was. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next we have the site plan review.
Now, you need to vote on the special use.
Oh, that's right, we got to vote on it.
Over deny the special use.
Sorry. I guess I'd entertain a motion unless there's some comment that anybody wants to make.
Make a motion to approve the special use for Seven Brew Coffee at 5806 Gal Road.
Support.
Okay, I would take a roll call for this one.
All righty. Commissioner Sherwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Nowak?
Yes.
Commissioner Weintraub?
Yes.
Chair Nichols?
Yes.
Commissioner Kreitzer?
Yes.
Treasurer Bloomfield?
Yes.
Motion passes six yays, zero nays.
Okay. Now, we're going to move on to the site plan review. Kyle?
Yes, sir, thank you for that. So again, as mentioned during our special land use review, we provided the table in here for the commission's consideration as well. They meet the standards of our ordinance for the use, schedule of regulations, landscaping, trash enclosures, parking and loading, exterior lights, and then agency reviews as well. We've gone through what the subject site is and what's it surrounded by. Schedule of regulations on this, minimum lot size, there is none, so that's a positive for them. They have about two acres out there right now. Lot width, there's no minimum. Front yard setback is 40 feet, but drive-through facilities are required to be 60. They're going to be greater than 94. Side yards have a 10-foot setback. Their minimum is 44 proposed. Rear yard is 20 feet. They have 167, and that's coming from the Meyer side of their rear yard for reference. Building height capped at 30 feet. They're proposing 20 feet. Lot coverage, there's no minimum, but they're about 6% in that regard. Landscape and screening, we went through the site plan review. They do get tree credits because they are preserving some of the on-site vegetation on there. So based on the credits that they are applying for on their canopy trees, understory trees and shrubs, and the green space, they are meeting the intent of our ordinance. We did have a conversation with their landscape architect about where to apply those tree credits. Staff felt comfortable in allowing them to reduce some of the tree canopy count along Gal Road, just to make it more visible to the businesses. They are still going to have vegetation along Gal Road, just not as dense in that regard. So staff felt comfortable giving them that leeway. Obviously, it's up to the planning commission to agree to that. Parking lot landscaping, they're proposing over 1,500 square feet of it. Canopy trees will have seven within the parking lots. Shrubs, they're going to have 16. So it is, when we first received the plan, Casey and I were very ecstatic because it was very well landscaped and over landscaped, so it was a nice surprise to get that. So they have scaled it down to be more consistent with the area, but still give the intent of the site. General site landscaping, as can show here, they do have a significant amount of vegetation still on that, I want to say boot end of the property that they're not developing right now. So that is where some of their credits come from. They have a trash enclosure that meets our standards. Off-street parking, because this is a drive-through only facility, they are required to have X amount of spaces for each loading zone, or drive-through area. So with stacking spaces, within that regard, they're showing every, each service lane, and there will be two, to have a minimum of 12 spaces for vehicles, or vehicles, where the minimum is 10. Exterior lighting meets our standards for foot candle illumination. We also have included in here too a letter from the township engineer regarding site plan review. They were consistent with it. They'll continue to work with their site design team as well, if anything along that nature. Comes up during construction costs. I'll zoom out a little bit for you to see the plan itself. Overall, as some of you have already mentioned, we are excited to see this vacant lot be invested in. So granted, they will come from the Meyer access, I'm calling it the Meyer access, but it's the, that southern area, those drive parcels as well, move forward along their service lanes. They have onsite parking for their staff. There is, again, as the applicant noted, it's drive-through only, so there is no counter service. We don't need to worry about really pedestrians crossing and going outside of their staff. They have enough space for 12 vehicles. They only need 10 for each lane. So overall, Casey and I were very happy with the quality of the site plans and mission for you in this regard. It does look like a nice investment into the community as well. So I will stop there and ask for any questions from the commission.
Any questions for Kyle?
The only question I had was in Pranand Newhouse's letter, they made note number five about the pass-through not being, not really being a pass-through and allowing cars to get around the queue. I wondered if the owner was aware of that comment and whether we had any concern about whether that could create any kind of backup of traffic.
I don't believe we had further... I don't believe we had further concerns on that. In that regard, the comments were passed along to their engineering team as well. I believe, Casey, we received comments?
Yes. Yes, I passed these along to the applicant, and then they created new plans, which you guys see today. Kicked them back over to our engineer, and he said that all of their concerns were addressed. As far as fire goes, fire had no concerns and gave the green stamp on their end as well.
Okay. I guess we can go to discussion. I'll start with you, Sandy, first.
I'm good with everything, except I know Mr. Sherwood agrees on me with this, is I think we still need to work on our ordinance for our landscaping because I think we're way overboard with it. I see these businesses come in, and then 15 years later, you can't even see the businesses behind the landscaping. So, yeah, if anything, I'd like to see that looked at, but I'm good with the site plan.
Joe?
I'm good with the site plan.
Joe?
I'm good.
I too, I too, I'm good.
Bob?
Yeah, I'm good with it. It's going to be nice to see something there, other than just fire hydrant and election signs a few times a year.
And tall grass.
And tall grass. Yeah, I agree with Sandy, but we do need to work on our shrub ordinance.
Oh, I agree with her.
Because there are some businesses you can't even see, and it's dangerous coming in and out of them.
Yeah.
So, yeah. With that, I guess I'd entertain a motion to approve the site plan.
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan for Seven Brewed Coffee at 5806 Gull Road.
Support.
Okay, I would take a roll call again.
Alrighty. Commissioner Sherwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Nowak?
Yes.
Commissioner Weintraub?
Yes.
Chair Nichols?
Yes.
Commissioner Kreitzer?
Yes.
Commissioner, oh, Treasurer Bloomfield?
Yes.
Motion passes six yeas, zero nays.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
And again, Mr. Chair, we will work with the applicant, get them their approval letter, probably next week.
Okay, thank you. And good luck.
Want some coffee samples at our next meeting?
Okay. Old business, do we have any? Any other business? No? Well, then I guess we'll move on to citizen comment, and it's going to be the same as before, so we will open for citizen comment. I don't know if he's coming or not.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks, guys. That's it. Thank you. At this point, I guess I don't see any more citizen comments, so I will close citizen comment. And we will go on to updates from other boards.
I just have a couple things. The Township Board moved forward with the mobile vendor ordinance, which is ordinance 554, and also with ordinance 557, which we worked on, which was 668 East ML Avenue. And that's it. Unless Casey has something?
Oh, no, not the Township Board, but I do have.
Is the guy who came for the mobile ordinance still interested in doing what we are doing, or did he just abandon everything?
Yeah, no, so there was a, if you remember all that East Michigan property, he was interested in going there. He applied for the mobile vendor ordinance back in January. While we were working on it, he was working behind the scenes for a grant to, for acquisition and for to help get the business started. He received the grant. They ultimately decided that was not the property for them due to contaminants found in the soil and in the ground that would require 20K plus per year to monitor. So they are still interested in looking at a different site, but it may be a while until they come back for that application. As far as other boards, I forgot to mention at last meeting, we had a ZBA meeting, was that, what was that, July? Yeah, I believe it was July. The applicant came in, they had an 840 square foot garage. They requested an additional 120 square foot shed to store their car in, because they were less than an acre. They could not come before you all for a special land use. They had to go for a variance from the ZBA. Ultimately, the ZBA decided there was no hardship to invoke the variance. So ultimately, that was denied. The applicant was aware that we were working on the ordinance, but decided they preferred not to wait to figure out the outcome of that. So I imagine that when our ordinance is passed, I might see an application come across.
Thank you. Training updates?
So Casey and I are working with other township staff. There is a planning conference coming up in October, and I have asked her if we can look at potentially what funds may be available to send commission members to that. It's the Michigan Association of Planning. It's their annual yearly conference. They have 25, 30-plus sessions across a three-day period, touches on a vast majority of topics across the state. So I have asked Casey, it's in Kelmazoo as well, it's at the Radisson.
Oh, that's good.
So I have asked Casey if we could look into, you know, what funding might be available to send some commission members to that. It does fall on the 22nd through 24th.
Which days are those? Do you know?
Wednesday through Friday.
It's a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and it would fall on your second meeting in October. So, we're trying to also work on what the schedule might look like for October for the commission to see if, you know, we could maybe take a break on that day and send you guys to training and a conference instead. There's a vast majority of topics, like I indicated, there would be great value added to the commission if they could, you know, if members could attend, so.
Yes.
I have spoken with Finance Director Brett, and the zoning budget does have a healthy amount in there for training. So I would like to see who would like to attend. I will also share that it is likely that your zoning staff may also be attending that conference. So we wanted to invite all of you guys, and the idea of a break on the 23rd doesn't work with you guys' schedule, or if it doesn't sound appetizing because we're getting busy. We could look at a meeting on the 16th of October. If you guys were interested and wanted to free the 23rd up, we could either, you know, take a break or move that meeting up a week.
I guess we could put that to a vote. I would be in favor of it.
Of which option?
Moving
To the 16th.
Moving the meeting to the 16th. Yeah, and so we can go. Put it to a vote, Bob?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Me, yes. James?
Yes.
Sandy? I guess it's unanimous.
I will notify Clark Bochamp of this, so she can adjust.
You don't have to attend all three days if you can't. There's different, every day there's different sessions that they're teaching. I am teaching one day, I don't remember what day.
And I think
Thank you.
Perhaps at the next meeting, next Thursday, I'll talk with Brett to see exactly what funds are available and how we would distribute that, and what the cost of the MAP one day are, so we can discuss that.
Maybe you could, yeah, give us what all we can attend and that kind of thing. Are these classes going to be kind of like the ones at the MTA?
It's like that very much.
Oh, yeah, that's a lot of fun.
Doesn't sound like it.
They're rough classes.
There are colleagues of ours that are also presenting as well throughout the conference, so they will be, I mean, we talked on everything from transportation, environmental, law topics as well, ethics. It's a pretty comprehensive overview, gets you a good sampling of different things and hear what other communities are dealing with as well. So it's also a good way to network with other commissioner members and staff members to see what their issues are facing. I'm sure battery energy storage will be talked about in some capacity, or renewable energy as well, so.
Thank you. Next items, information and future action items. And I do believe in the future, probably not this year, but we need to talk about our shrubs and trees and our landscaping ordinance.
Gotcha. Can do. I have another vote for you all. The Upjohn Institute, if you remember Emily Pets, she came before us to discuss the housing study. She and I spoke on a phone call, and we have action items that we should discuss with her. She asked what our meetings, she needs about an hour and a half to two and a half hours, and she asked what our meetings were looking like, if they were booked and busy. I said yes. So she proposed the idea of a special meeting September 18th at 4:00 PM, a workshop style, where we can just work with her for two and a half, two and a half hours and discuss the action items in the housing project. Looking to the future, she'll have, I believe, a draft of the final, of the housing, what's it called, report? And then it will finalize November 13th for you all. So getting very close to the end, and that special meeting would just help us get there a little quicker. Are you guys available the 18th at 4:00 PM? I just need a quorum.
What are we just saying, we're doing it the 11th or what? Can't we just do it earlier in the day? Like, instead of starting at 6, start earlier? I don't know if anybody
I think she's saying 4.
Yeah, what time you are, what were you thinking, Sandy?
Well, I was just, it sounded like, I don't show anything on September 18th. Do we have anything?
No, we haven't, it would be a special meeting.
Yeah, so, I mean, that gives us, how many Thursdays is that?
Five in a row.
Yeah.
That's a bit much.
It, yes.
I can't make it, I mean, 18.
Yep. So that was just the idea. I don't know if you guys want to have a longer day, or, but it's something that she would want to happen for the housing report.
Anybody got comments on that? Sandy, start with you.
I'd sooner start earlier on a meeting that we already have scheduled, if we can.
Yeah.
James?
I agree with Sandy said.
Joe?
Either way.
I would do
Greg?
I would do earlier.
Bob?
18 is definitely out for me, so another meeting earlier is fine by me.
She'll need two and a half hours. So are we looking at the 11th?
Hold it, you said an hour and a half, now you're telling us two.
She said an hour and a half to two and a half hours, so I'd rather.
And you tell her two and she's done?
Yes.
Four to six, and then we go six to what?
Well, we need four to 5:45 then.
Tell her she's going to talk fast.
It's more of a workshop style with you all drafting ideas, I believe. I don't believe we would need Attorney Kaufman or
That's fine.
Planning consultant, MOCA available, so it's more just when the commission is available. As long as I have four volunteers.
So could we maybe do 2:30 to 5:15, so we get ready for our planning commission meeting?
We could do 3:30, 5:30, that's a pretty even time, on the 11th?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, can anybody make that?
What was that time again?
3:30 to 5:30. On the 11th, I have to verify with her that she's available.
You'll set this out?
Correct. And I'll remind you all next week. And if she's not available that day, could we potentially do the 25th from 3:30 to 5:30? That's the second meeting in September. Just want to get options.
Can you also, when we get all this, can you do all the five meetings in a row?
Yeah.
Can you put it down in the mail?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's all right. Okay. So I will also offer 25th, 3:30 to 5:30. And we'll see what works with her.
Okay. Okay, at this point, we're, are you? You're finished? Sorry. Any comments, Bob?
No, it was a good talk tonight. It was smooth.
Great, great discussions.
Good. Joe?
It was good.
James?
Great meeting.
Sandy?
Everybody have a safe holiday.
Yes, and I appreciate all the discussion. Thank you. We are adjourned.